...tonight for City Council of Odessa, May 27th, 6 o'clock PM. Norma, would you please call Row?
Yes, sir. Mayor Hendrick.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Stoker.
Present.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Present.
Councilmember Vazquez.
Present.
Councilmember Cornell.
Present.
Councilmember Haney.
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Norma. Good to know you're with the invocation. I'm gonna call Pastor Don Kaywood to come give us our prayer for the night. Can you please stand if you're able?
Good evening. If I'd known there was gonna be such a crowd, I would've prepared a sermon tonight.
Let's pray.
Yes, sir.
Our Father, we come before you, exalting you and worshiping you, thanking you that every good and perfect gift comes down from you, the Father of lights, with whom there is no variation, neither shadow of turning. Father, we pray for our great city today. We pray for our citizens. We pray your peace, your joy, your grace upon their lives. Father, we pray for our city government. We pray for our mayor, our city councilman, city secretary, city manager, city attorney, and all who serve in this city government. We bless them and pray your grace and peace upon them. And, Lord, for tonight, we pray the wisdom of God will manifest for every choice, every decision that's made, and we're quick to praise you and give you all the thanks for it, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Councilman Vazquez, please sign the pledge.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas pledge?
On behalf of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible...
Thank you. You may be seated.
Except for me, proclamation.
Go earn your hundred dollars.
Damn, it's cold in here.
Am I supposed to go free?
No, I just wanted to buy my skills.
Gee, my skills.
Skateboarding.
I know.
Free game.
So many in the crowd tonight are here for Texas Scholars, and we want to congratulate those students. I just wanna tell you a little bit about the program. Each year, the mayor and councilmembers congratulate those students who have served the most hours in their school. And although summer has started, they are here this evening, and I think that also shows how important it is that they haven't officially started their summer. So I'm gonna tell you a little bit about the program. Texas Scholars started in 1997. It is something that the Odessa Chamber hosts. We work with more than 150 agencies throughout the community to encourage students to volunteer, and it really teaches them what volunteerism is all about, what these people are doing behind us here, their volunteering. So who knows? We may have the next mayor, city councilmember, in our audience today. This year alone, we had 741 students, grade nine through 12, meet the requirements for the hours. As a freshman, they have to serve five hours; as a sophomore, 10 hours; as a junior, 15 hours; and then 20 hours as a senior, cumulatively 50 hours, in order to walk across the stage with their gold cord. But as I will introduce you to some of these students, you will see that many of them far exceed the minimum of 50 hours. Since 1997, when we started, we have had students donate 393,000 hours. This year alone, those 741 students I mentioned served 27,566 volunteer hours, no pay. So as I call the students forward, I would like you to come on up, and certainly, the mayor wants to congratulate you. You've received your certificates and your swag at your school event, but I want you to look at these students because they're also our future workforce. So many of you in the audience, you may be looking for workers. I encourage you, when we finish, we're gonna go downstairs and take a group photo, tag some of them, and say, "Hey, you've got the summer. Would you like to come work for me?" Because these are the future leaders of our community. So we will start with New Tech Odessa. Again, if you're here, just come forward. We'll form a long line so we can recognize all of them. Our ninth-grade student from New Tech, Kimberly Claiborne, volunteered 39 hours. Is Kimberly here with us? Again, some may not be here, so I'll just keep on going until we see some of them come up. 10th grade, Elizabeth Owen Bonji, she volunteered 153 hours. She's probably volunteering now. Maybe that's why she's not here. 11th grade at New Tech, Frances Leonico, 186 hours. And then the 12th grader, Elizabetha Miranda, for her 12th grade year alone, served 103 hours. And the senior award went to Mary Rivera, who served 321 hours from ninth to 12th grade. Pretty amazing. Our next school is Odessa Collegiate. Oh, wonderful! Are you Mary? Mary! Yes. 321 hours, she was the cumulative award winner for her school. Odessa Collegiate Academy, 9th grade, Ivan Zubia, 26 hours. There's Ivan, come on up. Our 10th grade, we had a tie, two sisters, I believe, Maely Perez and Nema Perez, and I'm hoping I'm pronouncing it correctly, at 89 hours. Did I say it correctly? Good. Our 11th grade student, Scott Bodie, had 329 hours. And then our 12th grade student, who had the most hours for this year, Samantha Oats, at 400 this year alone, but overall, Samantha volunteered 494 hours during her high school career, which was also the most of any student in Odessa. Congratulations. Our next school, OC Techs, our 9th grader, Haney Holkeen, with 27 hours. Our 10th grader, Jocelyn Perez, 97 hours. 11th grader, Madasal Chavez, with 62 hours. And our 11th grade, I'm sorry, our 12th grader, with the most hours this year alone, and also the senior award for OC Techs, did it all in one year, 555 hours. Wow. Savannah Gomez, amazing. And I'm sorry, Savannah is the one with the most hours in the program. And, you know, we have parents here, we have teachers here, and I really applaud you for encouraging your children and your students for volunteering, and I think many times, the families volunteer right alongside them. Moving to Odessa High School, A.J. Guandalapali, 202 hours. 10th grader, Rosario Beruman, with 234 hours. Our 11th grader, Tatuya Gangaretti, with 137 hours. And our 12th grader, and also the senior award for the most hours cumulatively, was Kanish Yoncarla, with 178 hours this year alone, and 461 hours for the four years. Amazing. Oh, is this Kanish right here coming in? And the mayor would want me to tell you that OHS is his alma mater, so... From Permian High School, our 9th grader, Lila Andrade, for 160 hours. Our 10th grader, Annika Gonzalez, 140 hours. For 11th grade, we also had another tie, 100 hours each, I believe, sisters, Kira and Kylie Andis. And for 12th grade this year, Paola Renteria, with 228 hours, who was also a student formerly at NTO. And Paola ended up with 345 hours cumulatively, and then Tenley Walker, also from Permian, with 339 hours for the year. All right, now we have STEM Academy, Sean Rose, with nine hours. Evelyn Jones, with 29 hours. The 11th grader, Madeline Couch, with 79 hours. And then the 12th grader, with also receiving the senior award for 37 hours this year, and 68 hours all year, or all four years, Macy Jo Baker. So those are your ECISD schools who participated, but Compass Academy has also been participating for about the last five years, so we want to congratulate their students as well. The 9th grader, Ambry Salinas, with 156 hours. The 10th grader, Colin McDonald, with 100 hours. You can see on his shirt that he's also cross-country runner, so many of these students do a lot more than volunteering, so amazing how they get it all done. The 11th grader, Parker Davis, 94 hours. Our 12th grader this year, Jack Freeman, for 203 hours for this year alone as a senior. And then the student from Compass, who had the most hours, who I also read had perfect attendance from kindergarten to 12th grade, amazing, David White, with 299 hours for the four years. Again, congratulations to these students. You are a huge help for the nonprofits and agencies that you're volunteering for. Imagine 27,000 hours that were given at no pay. Imagine how much money that saved these agencies. So I encourage you to keep it going, and if you're not quite to 9th grade yet, or if you haven't started Texas Scholars and you wanna get involved, certainly jump in at any point, and congratulations to the schools and the parents as well who have encouraged this. Yeah, if you're a parent of one of these students, or a teacher, or an organizer, which I know we have some of those here, please stand up and be recognized. So if I can move away, and Monica asks if you can take one big picture here with the mayor, but then we're also gonna all go downstairs and take a group photo as well.
All right, everyone kinda squish it if you can, as much as...
Turn sideways.
All right, everyone look here, ready? One, two. Wait, hold on, this one, one, two, three. One more, one, two, three. Thank you, guys.
And one more big hand.
Do you still want your picture? Get him?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, guys. Thank y'all everyone for coming up there. We really appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Now, we're going downstairs, so you can always come back and learn about city government and be one of the candidates in four years.
Excellent. All right, have a faller day. Thank y'all very much.
We need those little coasters up here.
Just a minute, everyone get downstairs. All right, as they're going downstairs, I wanted to recognize someone that has served here the past seven months. We called Richard after the last city manager resigned and asked if he would be willing to come back to Odessa and serve as our interim city manager, and he agreed. I can tell you from my experience the last seven months, Richard has worked tirelessly to help the city with so many departments, so many different projects, that I really wanted to express our thanks. Mary, his wife, is in the audience, so I have a proclamation to begin with. Richard, come join me.
He's not here.
As Richard makes his way down, let me read the proclamation.
You're the next...
Whereas Richard Morton has faithfully served as city manager of the City of Odessa from January 2002 through September 17, and again, as interim city manager from November 24 through May 25, and it would have been permanent if Mary would have allowed it. Really? Whereas, Richard led with integrity, dedication, and a deep commitment to public service during his tenure. He oversaw numerous initiatives that improved the quality of life for the residents of Odessa, including the most recent leading the charge of a new city manager and providing options to funding of a sports complex. And whereas, Richard has consistently demonstrated exemplary leadership, financial stewardship, and responsiveness to community needs, earned the admiration of his colleagues, city staff, and residents alike. And whereas, Richard played a pivotal role in guiding the City of Odessa through challenges and opportunities, leaving behind a legacy of professionalism, innovation, and progress. And whereas, the City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Odessa, wishes to express our deepest gratitude and thanks and appreciation for Richard's outstanding contributions and dedicated service, now therefore, I, Bernard Calvin Hendrick VII, do hereby, by virtue and authority vested in me by the mayor of the City of Odessa, do hereby proclaim May 27, 2025, as Richard Morton Day, city manager... Don't move yet. There's a couple other things we'd wish... Youngsters, have a seat. Have a seat. This may take a while. There's a candle certain staff gave. You don't wanna tell you what you want, you'll have to find out for yourself. A beautiful candle that says, "Smells like..." Not my problem anymore. "Happy retirement to your great marriage." Here's a candle. Thank y'all. My contribution, through Norma's help, you're our city manager. Mary Terry. Perfect. And last but not least, you'll have an own clock. Say, never underestimate the difference you made, the lives you touched, and enjoy your next chapter. Congratulations. Record the next hour.
Thank y'all very much.
All right, let's move on. Is there any citizen comments on non-agenda items?
No, sir.
All right. Now move on to our consent agenda. We have the, consider approval of city council work sessions from May 13th, approval of city council minutes from May 13th, consider the vehicle for hire franchise of Ronald Wilkerson, consider approval request by Imperative Chemical Partners, consider approval request by J.D. Elsner Holdings. Oh, and number six, approving the purchase of Fercata Cameras to be installed at Municipal Hall, Municipal Plaza in City Hall. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, motion by Councilman Hanes, or second?
Second.
Oh, excuse me, Councilman Cornell, second by Councilman Haney. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have a motion to spend the rules and move Agenda Item 13 to the next agenda. Is there a motion?
So, ma'am.
The motions are second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Haney. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Move to Agenda Item 13. Consider amending, repealing Section 8-1-6, Odessa Code of Ordinances, first approved.
Mr. Bass, I believe that this be tabled.
There's a motion to table the item. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, motion by Councilman Haney, a second by Councilman Cornell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For anyone that showed up tonight for the bathroom ordinance, I apologize, if and when the state makes the decisions on the bathroom ordinance, we will try to follow so we're consistent with state law. Until such time, we're simply gonna table, and the ordinance will stand as is. Thank you. All right, Rick, so let's go to regular Agenda Item Number 7. Consider appointing David Vela to position as city manager and approving his employment agreement. Richard?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Mr. Vela has signed his employment agreement and is excited about starting his role as your city manager on June 2nd, and this is the formal appointment.
Fantastic. Any discussion, gentlemen? Don, I ask for a motion.
So move.
Motion by Councilman Thompson, is there a second? Second by Councilman Haney. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Public hearing, we're gonna, Agenda Item Number 8, open a public hearing to consider approval of an amendment to the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14, zoning, attachment 1, use of land in building schedule to remove mobile or HUD manufactured home dwellings that permitted uses in the GR, General Resident District, Universal District, Retail District, Retail District LC, Light Industrial Commercial District, HC, Heavy Commercial District, LI, Light Industrial District, and PD, Plan Development District. Mobile and HUD manufactured homes could continue to be allowed in the MH Mobile Home District and the MHE Mobile Home Estate District. All right, Liz.
Good evening, mayor and council. So let me...
You make your motion table?
Okay, so...
Okay, I think there may be a motion to table.
We're gonna make a motion to table this.
Okay. There's a motion to table.
Okay, we would just be tabling Item 8?
Just Item 8.
Just Item 8.
I'll second.
Councilman Stoker.
Making a motion to table Item 8.
Okay, there's a motion by Councilman Mitchell to table the mobile home ordinance. There's a second by Councilman Stoker. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passing, Anthony. Thank you, Liz. Stay there, though. Public hearing number nine, we're gonna open a public hearing to consider the approval, number one, of amendments to the City Code of Ordinances, comma, Chapter 14-14, nonconforming uses in structures, and Chapter 14-15, zoning board of adjustment, to remove certain limitations on reconstructing, extending, and enlarging nonconforming uses, buildings, and structures, and, number two, allowing the replacement of nonconforming mobile and manufactured homes with new manufactured homes consistent with Section 1201.008 of the Texas Occupancy Code. Liz.
Okay, so this would be the part that is nonconforming with our current ordinance, so we would love to be in compliance with our state law. So this would be my recommendation to at least move forward to allow us to be consistent with our state law, just because right now, nonconforming basically means, you know, you're grandfathered in for certain stuff, but in this case, it's saying that, so you have our current, and then the proposed. So based on our current ordinance, it's saying that you would have to go to ZBA in order to make any kinds of adjustments to your mobile home. Our state law says you shouldn't have to, so we would like to remove that, so they wouldn't have to go to ZBA anymore. It also has an area in where if there's a natural disaster, or if there's a fire, they can only rebuild if it's 60% that is damaged. We'd like to take all of that out, because it shouldn't apply based on the state law. They should have the rights to be able to just do that, so it's conflicting with ours right now. The word repair, replace would also be, it's saying you could only enlarge, so we would adjust the wording there as well. And then it says, not specific on when the nonconforming use is considered or discontinued. So it states that the word, "nonconforming," was not really clear, and so here, we would clear it off because they wouldn't fall into the nonconforming category. And the six months wouldn't apply to them in that case because they would always be allowed to change it. So allowing the replacement of mobile manufactured homes, this is something that I do need to ask you guys. So based on the state law, you guys have the authority to decide if we're only, for the replacement, if they're only gonna happen once, or how many times you want, it can, you guys can dictate that. State law gives you the authority to say that. And this does not apply to the natural disasters law, it's just for nonconforming areas where it's not allowed in certain zoning, so they would only be able to swap it one time, if that's what you guys wanna decide, but you guys do have to decide if you're gonna have a term of how long it would be. And that's, I think that's pretty much it now.
Is that a question on the once?
Yes.
Does that, is that once on that property, or is it once on that owner?
Once on that property.
So the reason I don't understand that is because if it were my property and I replaced it 30 years from now, and then sold it, or died, and whoever took it over, then it's been replaced once. What do the next people do?
Well, it would start when, if you guys decide today, it's whenever this ordinance gets, goes into action. So whenever we adopt it, that's when it would start. So even though they may have replaced it in past...
But I'm saying, if I own land today...
Yes.
And in 30 years from now, 30 years from today, I decide, you know, it's time to upgrade, and then I died a week later, you know...
The next person that either inherits it or buys your land, correct, they wouldn't be...
They wouldn't be able to replace it.
Unless it's due to a natural disaster.
So either we're gonna have a lot of people burning their houses down, or...
And it's even, even for us, like what you just stated, in 30 years, are we creating that problem in 30 years? By us having to...
That's my problem with the once, is that it, you're looking at the future and just, to me, you're taking the land off the roll, because the lots, when you look at a lot of these, they're a dimension, they're platted at a dimension where if somebody turned around and wanted to build a house on it, we wouldn't let them because the zoning needs the lot lines to be bigger. So if you can't replace it, you know, essentially, you've taken that land out of commission.
So the mobile home, these lots are, you can have a regular house in there.
But if you look at, in District 3, you know, for example, the area between Goldar, Andrews Highway, University, and 42nd, you know, the plating on there, a lot of those lots are 20, 30 feet wide. And if somebody came to you to build a house today, how wide does a lot have to be?
Those would be, so a lot of those lots were, when they annexed in, that's how they came in. So there's a lot of lots that are nonconforming, and that's when you have to do, they were sold by meets and bounds, or they was brought in in a different way, so that's when you have to go to the ZBA in order to allow... So that's when you have to go to the ZBA in order to allow for certain buildings to come in for nonconforming law. Um, so yes, there are those lots that we are going to have that are smaller, but you, it doesn't mean that you cannot build a house. You can either put a mobile home or you can do a very narrow house.
I just, I think it's easier to, to stick with one. My, my other question, if you're looking at the, and this may be a you question, on the updates on that G three, the replacement after six months, a period in subsection E. Subsection E talks about, uh, nonconforming, it talks about abandoned, uh, buildings. So I don't know why that is going under G. Does that need its own section?
So that's what we want to change because that shouldn't apply to those.
Right, but that's an addition. It, it, G is the replacement of existing mobile homes under twelve oh one dot double oh eight, which is the state...
That's why we're saying their nonconforming will never expire.
Right, but talking about, I just don't think that belongs there.
So do you think it needs to never subject?
Yes.
It has to stay there because it doesn't represent just that question for mobile homes. It represents for other categories. That's why we want to make it clear where it says mobile manufactured homes are not subject to the six month rule. Their nonconforming will never expire.
Okay.
But to me, if a mobile home is there and it's grandfathered in, then that land should just be there forever. That's all you can put on it as a mobile home because of the width it's even saying.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So, so if you, if you don't put the once on there...
Yeah.
Then that's what you're saying.
Yeah. It's just, it's built for a mobile home, that's what's going to have to go on it.
Remember that a lot of these zonings are not classified specific for mobile homes. So we have GR, which you can have so many different uses in them. So don't fixate on the land size, it's the use, what we need to determine, okay, it's allowed, we determine it's going to be allowed everywhere else. So it's more right now just fixing this ordinance in order to make it legal with our state law.
Well, and so I, I agree that we need to be consistent with state law because we got to follow that anyway. Uh, but what I'd like to see is several solutions because, you know, what came out of this discussion was if this is about affordable housing, you know, okay, well, you're taking away affordable housing. Well, we need to have a broader discussion about how do we bring more affordable housing? What can we do? Do the zones make sense? I think, you know, that was something that, that I had talked about, you know, we've got thirty-two zones, all right, do they all make sense? Do we need fifty? Do we need twelve?
And we fix that when we do our zoning update.
I was going to say, so I, I think on this, we, okay, are we doing it, conform with state law, the once, all right, I'm, I'm not in big favor of the once, but I think the zoning question, I think all these other questions, that's part of the bigger discussion about affordable housing, attainable housing, the future.
So the once deal, we can't change, right?
No, you can. You guys have, you guys, that's up to you guys to decide.
Yeah, it's up to us, it's up to the municipality whether you do it once or not.
If that's going to be a one thing or as many times as you want.
Why don't we adjust it to three or four, whatever you want to adjust it to instead of...
Richard, thoughts?
Well, I just want to make it clear what we're talking about so that, so that everybody understands. This, a mobile home in, in this location, we're talking about a current nonconforming structure, right? So...
So the nonconforming goes out.
Right, so if, if I brought in a mobile home to this location, may I place a, a mobile home there now, brand new?
Yes.
Okay, so why limit it? I guess is my question.
Because state law gives you the authority for you to decide as a city if you're going to want to be regulating just the swap for one time or as many times.
I'd like them to swap out as many times as they want. They can upgrade and get better.
Again, I would argue that...
Because the language does say...
That's one of the things that the language does.
It, it has to be replaced with a newer unit.
Yes, of equal size or larger.
So, yeah. So every time it's replaced, it gets better.
But if I can do it tomorrow on that lot that's unoccupied, I can come in and place
a mobile home on that lot right now?
Um, yes, as long as, yes, because we didn't change our, uh, zoning and any restrictions, yes.
As long as it's a newer mobile home.
Right.
Right.
Can't be nothing older than what you already have.
It can be, um, no, if it's brand new, you know, it just has to comply to be, to be, uh, after nineteen seventy-four.
I'm going to take public comment after opening a public hearing, but basically we have a choice, once or multiple times, right? That's our choice.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and to answer your question, what are other cities doing? They're split fifty-fifty.
Fifty-fifty, okay.
So...
Let me open a public hearing now. Uh, this is the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak can do so at this time. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Uh, is there anyone from the, uh, crowd would like to speak on this?
Shane Fuller.
My name is Sean Fuller.
Excuse me.
That's okay, I just wanted to make it clear for the record. Mayor, mayor pro temp, and I definitely want to address some of the things that you spoke about. My name is Sean Fuller. I've been in the affordable housing industry for over three decades, and, and I think we have really overthought this problem. If we simply will make a motion to amend our current ordinance to match the state law and then decide, and I would propose that you have the ability as this council to say, Mr. Property Owner, as long as you comply with state law, replace your house as many times as you want, whether it's today or a hundred years from now or the ordinance gets changed. I have lots of things to say about eight, which obviously has been removed, but I, I believe that, uh, since that's been tabled, I would, I would request that you guys actually consider killing it because I think the P and Z hearing where many of your citizens spoke, people from the industry, the economic impact and the, and the detriment that would occur to affordable housing in Odessa, Texas, would be extremely detrimental to your community, and I would encourage you to kill that. Anytime I have left, I will yield to anyone else that is, uh, in support of, uh, fixing number nine and killing number eight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller, we appreciate it. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am, come forward, please.
I don't know if I can make it up there, but I think you can hear me from here.
You got a pretty good voice.
Well, it's ten years from here, it doesn't.
Introduce yourself, ma'am.
My name is Eda Kruger.
Okay.
With a K. Uh, I live in, uh, Section Three, I think it is. Anyway, uh, I was just going to say, from my feeling of the thing on number nine, is that there needs to be more discussion from the, the, uh, citizens about what they would want because from living here thirty-seven years, I've noticed that people move in and out and things change a lot. And how are we going to be able to change a lot? Because, I mean, people do that in the industry they're in out here with oil and gas. How are they going to do that? If we have it just so one thing and that's it, and, and it's going to make it harder for people to live in and out of here. That's just my personal opinion.
Thanks, Ms. Kruger, we appreciate it.
Come forward. On behalf of some mobile home owners and some mobile park owners. John, with, with what Mr. Fuller said, I believe in addition, something that needs to be considered is...
Your name?
Bradley Baines.
He's an attorney.
And, uh, something that needs to be considered is you have different setbacks in different zoning areas. Mobile homes now are larger than they were in the fifties, sixties, and even in the seventies. And so if you're going to replace it, something needs to be looked at, the setbacks for the different zoning areas that you have. Otherwise, I, I, I think this probably needs to go back to the drawing board as well and deal with that so you don't have a continued mix mash of, hey, I could put this mobile home over here, but four hundred feet over here in a different zone, I can't put it over there because of the setback differences. And I think, I think that's a potential problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Bradley, appreciate it. Yes, sir, come forward.
Yes, my name is Paul Crowe, and I'd like to thank everybody.
Paul, what's your last name?
Paul Crowe.
Crowe, how are you doing?
Thank everybody for listening to me, give me a chance to voice my opinion here. I've been on Carolyn Drive, which is in that zoning that they want to change. Uh, I have a lot of affordable housing. I bought up little houses and, and lots as they became available, put some mobile homes on some of modular homes. And these people work at, uh, you know, very moderate jobs they couldn't afford. I can't imagine a builder coming in there and building a house on a lot designed for a mobile home. Like, you had some good points, Mr. Stoker. Very good. Uh, you can't, you can't do that. Uh, you couldn't even put a house that's on a bigger lot and get your money back, back out of it. You couldn't build a spec home on Carolyn Drive and with the material it would cost, that, the location alone. Talk about improving Odessa. We have a lot of mo- modular homes around there that look much better than the housing there. There's abandoned housing and there's just people that can't afford to maintain their homes, a lot of that. And these aren't modular homes, these are stick-built homes, and they're, they're deteriorating badly. They, paint would help, mow the yard would help, that sort of thing. So, uh, my points are pretty much along with Mr. Stoker's there. Uh, you couldn't build a house on those narrow lots. And recently, there's probably been twenty, uh, they took a large lot, used to be a, a salvage yard there because it's zone light industrial, and they divided it up. Somebody had a idea to make some money. They sold those little narrow lots for ninety thousand dollars. I couldn't believe it. It's up there near, uh, Goldar on Carolyn Drive. And they probably put twenty trailers in there, twenty, twenty mobile home, modular homes, whatever you want to call them. But those people bought those lots and, and bought their, their mobile homes and put them in, and this has been within the last three years. And then there's more. They, they did it down the street on Mesquite Drive. They got about four or five lots that they put those modular homes on there as well. So we, we're making a major change here. Been on that street for seventy years, and I don't understand it, uh, why we're doing this. I'd like to leave it alone, but I do understand you've got to conform to state law, but if y'all have the power to say anything about it, I'd like to leave it pretty much like it is. I have plans to put some mobile, uh, modular homes on property I have, lots, in the near future, and I don't want that jeopardized. I'd like to rent them out to people that need them. Well, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. Anybody else like to speak?
Mayor can have my minute, I'm sorry, I got to...
Come on back. I'm not going to stretch your minute.
I just want to clarify, I just want to clarify, unless I've missed something, if you have a mobile home, right, and you decide to put a house on the lot, it's our one, you can do that.
That's right.
Right? But, but I did, I wanted to clear up that misconception, that's all.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, unless it's light industrial or commercial or...
Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Ed Lassiter. Uh, I was born in Odessa almost seventy-three years ago, and I've lived here a long time. The, uh, I agree with Councilman Stoker, I, I think we ought to leave it alone. A lot, many of those lots are to some degree in a floodplain over there, and it is absolutely economically not feasible to bring in enough dirt to build those up to build a conventional or a site-built home, uh, on those lots. It just absolutely costs too much, there's no economic return, as the gentleman just got up here and said, you can't build on there and expect that you're going to be able to make any money out of it. And by not allowing someone to replace their existing manufactured home with another manufactured home, you're almost destroying the economic value of that lot to those people if they ever want to turn around and sell it. I have developed homes down in those neighborhoods, and even when they are not in the floodplain, I can tell you it's almost economically unfeasible in a lot of them to put a manufactured home on those lots because of all the things that you have to do to conform, uh, with the building codes. And to build those lots up, you still got to be two feet higher than the curb level, and a lot of those that are not in floodplain, it takes a lot of fill, it takes a lot of expense, and I think the net effect is you are really harming the current property owners by limiting how many times they can replace that home. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Ed, appreciate it.
Congratulations, Richard.
Thank you, Ed.
Are there any other speakers? Seeing done, we'll close the public hearing. All right, uh, gentlemen, questions, concerns?
Do we, we, do we decide tonight how many, you want to go more than once or multiple times? Can we decide that now?
I think tonight, all we're deciding is to, to, number one, to make sure our ordinance follows state law. Number two, what, whether you want to make it once or multiple times. I think that's the issue before us, and I think, if, I think if I've heard from our citizens, that it's multiple, but that's what I heard. Gentlemen, any motions on it?
Well, I'd make the motion to go with number nine to amend our ordinance to conform with state law but also allow multiple replacements.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Councilman Stoker, second by Councilman Vasquez. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for speaking. All right, we're going to now go to agenda item number ten. We're going to open a public hearing to consider requests by VO Realty LLC for an annexation of sixteen point eight-eight acres of land in the sea limits of Odessa with the original zoning under light industrial for three point nine-four acre tract of land. Section forty, abstract five ninety-three, block forty-two, township two, Texas, A dash seven, the Texas Pacific Railroad Commissioner's survey. Lizbeth.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm here, um, presenting the annexation from, that was presented by, um, Maverick Engineering on behalf of VO, VNO Real Estate. Um, the annexation is sixteen point eight-eight acre lot, um, tract of land. Within that sixteen point eight-eight acres, we are looking, asking for three point nine four acre tract of land to be zoned as light industrial. So I have them separated a little bit, so you can see the total, that's the sixteen point eight-eight, and this would be the three point nine-four zoning for the light industrial.
Okay, the bottom of it, yeah.
Any questions for me?
Any questions for your opener hearing?
You send out any letters?
Yes, we didn't receive anything back.
Nothing back, okay.
And it was sent to the county and they, they signed off as well.
All right, let's open up a public hearing. Uh, this is a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak can do so at this time. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, council, any questions or discussion? All in favor, entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilman Thompson to approve. Motion by Councilman Canal, second. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously, thank you. Agenda item number eleven, consider the appointment and salary of an associate municipal court judge for a remaining unexpired term. Norma.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Council. At the last council meeting, the city council appointed Carlos Rodriguez to fill the vacancy of the associate municipal court judge. This is the ordinance that states of the appointment, plus also it dictates the salary as directed by council for the one hundred and forty-four thousand dollars annual salary.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Not entertaining motion.
Uh, so move?
Second.
That's a quick one.
See, that's the hard part. Second by Councilman Canal. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, let's go to item number, agenda item number twelve, discuss an ordinance to establish speed limits and prohibited parking zones. Joe.
Good evening, Mayor Council.
Joe.
I have like four of them, do we need to agree on all four or just one at a time?
Say it again, now?
I take them one, introduce them one at a time.
Yeah, introduce them one, we'll probably be able to agree.
Okay. So, all right, propose a speed limit on one hundred street from three eighty-five to loop, three thirty-eight from thirty miles an hour to forty miles an hour.
Okay, increasing it by ten, okay? Repeat the speed again, I'm sorry.
It's, uh, thirty miles an hour right now, up to forty miles.
Thank you. And, Joe, how do you... Joe, you got a bunch of old guys can't hear, but, it's not like me, younger, I'm[1769.54]
I'm getting a good hearing. Sorry about that.
Is it any resident, is it any housing on that street?
There's housing, but there's, uh, the front doors really aren't fa, are, aren't, are not facing One Hundred Street.
What's number two?
Number two. This is an agreement with, for text dot for an existing speed limit of seventy miles an hour. Proposing a speed limit to sixty miles an hour from, on three eighty-five, South Loop three thirty-eight to Mercer Road for about three miles.
Okay. Three.
Number three. We want to prohibit, uh, no parking from eight AM to five PM on, on school days when schools in session.
I'm sorry, I couldn't, I didn't understand what you said.
Sorry about that.
I'm sorry.
On McKinney?
On McKinney, okay.
McKinney, mhm. Prohibit parking between the hours of eight AM to five PM on school days when school's in session.
Okay.
And what school is right there?
OHS.
OHS.
Those are high school kids are parking back in the neighborhoods.
All right, number four.
They don't want to conform to the school parking.
And one more. Prohibit parking along the remaining portions of Stony Ridge not currently covered by the ordinance from East Ridge to Emerald Forest. Right there in front of the apartments.
All right, Jim, there's four different, uh, proposals. We can do them individually or do them one at a time?
You can do them all together.
Mr. Mayor, I have a, I disagree with the, the speed limit.
Which one?
Decrease from seventy to sixty miles per hour.
That is on number two. Speed limit reduction on South Highway three to five. You do not agree?
I do not agree.
You want to tell us why?
Um, because I travel that road all the time. It does not need to be decreased. There's no, there's no right reason behind this. They'll stay that way.
Joe, what was the reasoning behind this?
Yeah, with traffic.
Uh, text dot has reached out to have an agreement for it. They want to reduce it from seventy to sixty.
We're about to build a, uh, a bridge over that. Nothing should be slowed down when you go through there.
Well, that is, that is one of the highest, uh, accident areas that text stops right on.
That's at the light right there, and the light controls that. So if you can't stop for the light, then, yeah.
I, I get it. I'm just sharing data.
And that's a growing area. That traffic's going to get heavier.
And that, and that's why it's first up along the overpass coming from the MPO. And money's already been appropriated for it, and that will be coming along shortly. But that is the highest, uh, Mr. Tucker, help me out. I think that's one of the highest, uh, wreck areas.
That overpass is next one that's going to, it is a text out request. And that they own that road. The only reason they have to come to us is because it's in the city limits.
Yeah. Let's do this. Let's break it down.
Comment on, on a hundredth. Comment on a hundredth. So on a hundredth, that's in my district, and that is a frequent call for speeding. In fact, we're doing a, doing a ride along here coming up in a couple of days because of that particular issue. So the residents in that area, um, have been putting in the complaints of the speeding. I know there's a stop sign looking at coming in on the corner. But, uh, can you justify for me, when, when we're getting complaints on speeding, raising the speed limit, which these people will probably then go even faster? So how, how can you defend that? You made an, an evaluation that, that seems it could, uh, help the problem. But could you explain that to me?
Well, we did a study up there and, on a hundredth, and the average speed up there was around forty miles an hour.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Joe, you have some insight for us?
Yeah, the other thing, Councilman, is, um, that is a classification, a street classified as a arterial. It's the same classification as University Forty-second, Grandview, Dixie. That's, none of those are thirty mile an hour streets. Arterial streets are designed to carry traffic across the city. And for that reason, most, they're all forty to fifty mile an hour.
So indirectly, actually, it could help the speeding issue.
Well, you, yeah, I mean, it's a, it'll help enforcement because people are already driving forty out there. And, uh...
But that doesn't make you right just because they're driving forty in the...
Well, I think it's, it does because forty's really the right speed for that area. It should have never been thirty.
When you, when you say the right speed, Joe, how do you, how does an engineering, uh, traffic engineering study determine the proper speed for a road? What goes into that?
We do speed studies, and it's based on eighty-five, eighty-fifth percentile of what people are actually traveling. And that tells us, uh, the proper speed. And, and that assumes you're going to have fifteen percent speeding, which happens anywhere. But that, that speed study, um, told us that forty was appropriate.
Joe, um, between Andrews Highway on University going east to Grandview, if I'm recalling correctly, because I traveled it quite a bit, it's thirty-five miles an hour.
I believe it's forty. I don't have it, I don't have it in my head.
But my question, I guess, the reason I brought that example up is because why not thirty to thirty-five instead of jumping to ten miles more? In a residential area?
Yeah. And this is residential, but so is Grandview, so is Dixie. I mean...
Those are in the forties, as you best recall?
They are. They're, I think Grandview's forty-five.
You know what Eightieth Seventh is? That's...
Forty-five.
Eightieth Seventh's forty-five. It's the same classification.
Do you have any other questions for Joe or Joe?
So, uh, you talked about enforcement, but, I mean, how's that going to work?
Well...
Where's Chief Kirk when you need him? Come on up, sir.
Because Eightieth Seventh looks like it's forty. Eightieth Seventh is a big wide road. Is the Hundredth as big as Eightieth Seventh?
Yeah, it's the same size.
It is a wide.
You ought to get it downtown sometime.
It's an arterial street.
One of the biggest problems we have is it's a wide roadway.
Dave, after you introduce yourself.
I'm sorry, Deputy Chief Matt Davidson. It's a wide roadway. And, uh, cars speed up on wide roadways. When this development came in, I mean, if it's going to be an arterial to get from one place to the other, people are going to, like I tried to drive it and not pay attention to the speedometer when we first started and got complaints. And forty felt natural. I mean, it's just that wide of a roadway. We've written tickets. I think we wrote, I'm like a hundred and... Yeah. It's over a hundred, and then we started getting compliance. And then we go back out there and we're right back at it again because it's just a raceway of a road. It's not developed appropriately to slow people down, to bring people together. You know, the more narrow roadways, you naturally drive closer or drive slower. So this development of it is wide open, and it's a natural thing. I think the average speed was forty-three?
Forty-three.
So the enforcement, like, we'll go out there and write a bunch of tickets to something that's natural to everybody. And then they'll start comply, complying until we leave, and then it's just right back at it.
I just don't know that I've ever heard that. We make the speed limit based on what everybody's driving.
So maybe we just, maybe we just need to put speed bumps up. Then we can stop on this altogether.
We don't want the speed bumps. We've been through that. But, yeah, I mean, I've been talking about traffic calming and, and slowing everybody down and making the lanes more narrow. And, I mean, you know, I'm kind of with everybody else. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense to now just start raising the speed limits on these things.
I'll, I'll have to disagree with that one. These are wide. If you've been out there, these are very wide thoroughfares. They're as wide as University. You've got to move people from one point to the next.
Yeah, people are going sixty down University.
Well, I can't help that. I'm just trying to solve this problem. But we have a lot of speeding, a lot of trucks, and a lot of traffic. Those are where a lot of people live and get to work. And those are two national outlets, a Hundred Street to three thirty-eight and Eightieth Seventh Street to three thirty-eight. Those are big wide thoroughfares, and that's how people go to work. And it just, if you, if you drop it down, it's just going to slow moving traffic.
Our arterials are designed to carry traffic across town. They're not, they're not neck of the streets. So that's obviously, you're going to want to move traffic at a little higher speed.
Well, science is eighty-five percent of the people are driving about forty.
Yes.
I think the other psychological thing is on East Hundred, if you go east, you'll see a lot of neighborhoods, and those neighborhoods are, are right up against the Hundredth. And that's what they're complaining about. But you see the open fields, more or less, to the north. That encourages speeding. You know, it's, it's wide open, the road's wide. But you do have the residential homes, so on the south side.
So what actually, actually, east of, to the north of a Hundred Street is Windmill Crossing. It's another residential area with outs out on thirty, three thirty-eight and on three eighty-five. Because the loop goes around Windmill Crossing. So there's other ways out of there other than the Hundredth. And then we're getting ready, and then we are on schedule to, that's the next overpass to be built is like an Eightieth Seventh, to move that traffic.
Any public comments for me?
Yes.
I thought there was. Who would like to speak for the public quickly?
Dallas Kennedy?
Dallas, come forward.
Let's go either way.
My name's Dallas Kennedy. I live out there in this neighborhood. Um, I agreed with that a year ago. Um, a year ago, like he said, that was an empty lot back there. And all that was for was catching on fire when they did fireworks. Everybody did their fireworks on a Hundred Street. They caught that field on fire. The fire station had to go put it out. But since then, there is now a neighborhood back there. There's a lot of cars back in there. Um, this, it, that, that's more of a residential. I mean, it is wider. I would say maybe thirty-five because some of those roads out there are really wide. But they're also, um, I mean, our, our flood zones. And so it's basically a river when it rains. Um, so I would be concerned about making the speed too high because also going on Andrews Highway, all you got is a stop sign. Going out here, um, on the loop, you ju, it is now open all the way on a Hundred Street. You just got a stop sign. I'm sure y'all know, there's probably a death a week on Eightieth Seventh and the loop. I'm, I may be exaggerating, but just Saturday night, Friday night, I was coming back from playing poker, as y'all know, and, um, there was a wreck there at Eightieth Seventh, and I had to go along and finally found the exit for a Hundred Street, but it was dark. Um, if, I didn't know where it was, and I felt, even though there's no traffic out there, it felt dangerous. So I, I would have some concern about raising that speed limit to forty, mainly because you have a new neighborhood out there. You do have houses along that road. Um, you've had, um, car, houses ran into on that road because people were speeding. So we've actually had a couple of houses have trucks gone through them on that road. So I would just be cautious, um, about raising it. It, it's also one of those that has a lot of big dips, and cars are already jumping and scraping the bottom of their trucks. I would be cautious about raising that too much. So that's it.
Looks like there might be a stop sign going in on the Hundredth and Sagebrush too. Maybe that'll help.
All right, any other public comment?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any more discussion?
So how, and I forget which one of y'all said it, but you said that it, almost that we could have done a better design on this. Like, how in the future do we not build the roads, these long, straight, flat raceways that were... Because you hear about it on Eightieth Seventh. Now we're hearing about it here. You know, I don't know how many calls I got from Ross Forrest about Mission and Dorado and...
Well, I got that taken care of.
Oh, I know.
But I, I understand that. People, people are going to, it's like when you, when you squeeze a tube of toothpaste, wherever you squeeze it, something's going to squirt out. So that road, for instance, to your point, Councilman, that Mission Boulevard comes off of Bankhead Highway. Comes by the old Golden Acres Country Club, down through where it comes, you know, down to Santa Fe, through the country club. Never used to be a problem. Bankhead's getting redone. It's a good highway now. People are jumping off of eighty on the Bankhead down that direction. So like, there's that toothpaste squirting out. They found that route, and now they're using it because they don't want to go down to Foddy and turn right on Foddy. So there's probably no right answer, but we've got to move traffic. I'll say it once again. We do have overpasses scheduled for Eightieth Seventh Street and a Hundred Street because those people got no way to get out. And we've got, but that's going to take some time. We got to do South three thirty-eight first, and those are the next two to get done. They're already in the text off plan. So raising the speed limit some, whether it needs to go all the way to sixty or not, or fifty, whatever. Forty, yeah. I wrote down sixty on something, sorry.
That's the other one.
That's three of them. Forty doesn't seem unreasonable to me. But I'm sensitive to that, but that's just my opinion.
Let's do this. Let's, let's break it down into these individuals. Let's just start with the first one Joe mentioned. Speed limit adjusted on a Hundred Street right here. The, uh, increase it from thirty to forty is the proposal. I'll entertain a motion on that particular street.
Those approve to go to forty?
There's a motion to go from thirty to forty by Councilman Thompson. Is there a second? If not, it fails.
I'll make a motion when we move to thirty-five.
There's a motion to move the speed limit from thirty to thirty-five on a Hundred Street. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Thompson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Let's go to the second one. This is a speed limit reduction on South Highway three eighty-five. A decrease from seventy miles an hour to sixty miles an hour. Is there a motion?
Me. I'd like to motion to make this a decrease to sixty-five instead of seven, I mean, to sixty.
Okay, Councilman Haney.
I'll second on that.
A decrease from seventy to sixty-five.
Second on that.
Second by Councilman Haney. No, excuse me, by Councilman Canal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye. Opposed.
Five to two is the, uh, vote on that one. The third one is prohibit parking on both sides of McKinney Avenue from thirteenth to fourteenth between the hours of eight to five on school days. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Stoker, Richard, second by Councilman Vasquez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. Fourth one. Prohibited, prohibit parking on portions of Stony Ridge Road not currently covered by the ordinance. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Haney is our second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Canal.
I would like to make one comment on that.
Yes, sir.
So any of you get over on that part of town, you need to drive down Stony Ridge and take a look. We've got, we've got doolees parking on the sidewalk, off the sidewalk. You can't, there's a bunch of kids that live in there, and they run in and out of there. That's the way I have to go home every day. So it's very, very, very dangerous. And a lot of people complaining. Uh, that was changed, I don't know, back under Mr. Morton's former tenure, I think. He probably, oh.
Just my guess, still here.
And we, and we moved the, we moved the striping over. I would also like to include that we re-stripe it, Joe, so that we get the stripe in the middle of the road.
I'll put Joe in charge of that.
Yeah.
All right.
Making it narrower did not work.
The motion is to prohibit parking on portions of Stony Ridge Road not currently covered by the ordinance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. All right. Thank you, Joe. We appreciate it. All right, there is a resolution, agenda item number fourteen. Consider T M L's contract recommendation for Tokyo Marine H C C for cyber liability insurance. Yvette.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, thank you for allowing me to come before you. Um, I won't be here long just to, um, talk about the cyber, um, insurance contract that we agreed to go out and take a look and see if we could find better coverage, um, for the city. And Tokyo Marine H C C is supposedly known as one of the best cyber insurance companies, uh, in the U.S. And it would increase our liability, liability limits up to five million dollars across all tiers of coverage. Um, there are a couple of things that I'd like to point out. One is that, um, it will now include a retention of fifty thousand dollars, and we don't currently have that now. Um, and then, secondly...
Talking about fifty thousand dollars, is that our, that's deducted?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you for mentioning that.
And, um, and then, until we are able to complete the VPN, um, the company has stated that they will, um, reduce the limits until we're able to do that. However, um, once we send them confirmation that the VPN is complete, um, they will, um, increase the limits back up to the, the standard, um, within thirty days. This contract is fifty-four, um, fifty-four thousand dollars plus. Um, and it's approximately eighteen thousand for the rest of this year, which, um, we'll be able to cover.
Councilman Thompson, I'd like for you to guide me and my thoughts on that, since you're an insurer.
Well, that's not really my field, but I know enough about it to be dangerous. I don't know what the VPN is our, our address.
And Tony's gonna, Tony's gonna come up, and I promised him I wouldn't talk too technical, but it's what allows us to get into our system external.
So essentially, it's, we can turn on the VPN now, but we want to make sure that it's secure. So they want to, so when we bring it up, we want to make sure it's secure. So we're gonna work on it Wednesday, and we estimate that within the next four weeks, we should have it up and running. So it's really not the VPN, it's making sure it's up securely and safely. Because that's a major vulnerability for any organization, is that allows somebody from the outside to get inside. So you want to make sure that's correct.
Mr. Thompson asked what VPN stands for.
Virtual Private Network, essentially, is just a tunnel. It's a secure tunnel that allows you...
It's encryption.
Yeah, correct.
So here's my question. Did we not have coverage before, or was it a smaller amount?
That's a great question. So yes, we did have coverage before through TML. The initial coverage that we had, like in 2023, TML did not have a risk pool. And so the coverage levels were very low, and we only pay like $400 for it. And for this year, they introduced a risk pool, but the coverage limit is still very limited. It's approximately $2 million. But then the coverage levels for other services are very low, within $50,000. And so with this coverage, it allows us up to $5 million, and $5 million at every coverage level. The additional point that I wanted to share is that Council Thompson suggested that we get the terrorism coverage, and we priced it with this coverage. And so that's included as well, as well as cyber terrorism.
Fantastic.
And we already have...
Does the $50,000 SIR include the terrorism?
Yes.
Their separate deductibles or the same?
I'm sorry, can you repeat?
Same 50 or different?
Yeah, same 50 or...
Same 50. But the terrorism policy is a standalone policy. So it's not with the cyber, but it's under the same company.
I understand, so it would be a separate deductible?
I don't think it would be a separate deductible, but I can confirm that for you.
Because it's two different companies, I would think.
Yeah. So the terrorism coverage is, it's called TRIA. It's the federal program in which the government subsidized if they were to certify Terrorism Act. So that's what that coverage is. So it actually is kind of a stop, stopgap.
Thank you.
Jim, are you questions for anyone?
So on the, it says the includes ransomware, cyber extortion, with the exception of cybercrime? What is, what are cybercrimes?
Cybercrime, I don't really know what it all entails, but there is a separate cyber liability policy.
Because I see that on seven, but I didn't, I don't know how to necessarily read all that.
Changing worlds. Any other questions? If not, I entertain a motion.
Move of approval?
Motion by Councilman Thompson to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Taken by Council Canal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin.
All right, let's move to Agenda Item Number 15. Consider to support City of Odessa's application to the Texas Department of Transportation, 2025 transportation alternatives set aside. Call for projects for the Wildcat Trail.
Hi, good evening again, thank you. So we are here, in January of this year, Tech dot opened up a program asking communities to see if they would be interested in projects. And we decided to go ahead and do the preliminary application for a Wildcat Trail on our part as of February the 21st. That preliminary application was approved. So now what we're doing is we're moving into the more detailed application of that. We have, what we're proposing at this time is to construct a 12-foot-wide shared-use pathway that will begin on Loop 338 and East University Boulevard near U2BB. And it will extend northeast to the spur of 555 and Highway 191. Now, let me also note that where we will start ours is where U2BB will end their trail. So here we have, where it shows all of the trail, it has a little bit of different color coding that was provided by Dunaway, which is who we partnered with to get all the information together to submit it. So the blue is a proposed six-inch asphalt trail with one-inch concrete ribbon. The teal-colored is a, is the sidewalk that's already existing, but we would have to expand it to meet the standards. And the purple would be the existing sidewalk that, oh, I'm sorry, I said that wrong. The teal is already there, but just needs to be widened. And then the purple's existing sidewalk that neither's, it's either already wide enough. So that way, that's how it was broken down. But the entire path is the hallway that we have there. So here we have where you can see where it's starting at the, where U2BB's ending. Once it crosses over, it will cross over into the Rocky Lane Road near, and it'll go straight in through the Country Club Estates neighborhood. And then it'll go up to the Linden B Johnson Elementary School. We will continue on the easement northeast until it reaches the East Ridge Road. And then, once we get to East Ridge, the pedestrians have the choice to go left or right, and either they can go into Parks Lagato Road, or they can go up on Fodry. And we will end up passing by the newly constructed Bass Pro Shop and also the Harmony School that is under construction. So this is just connecting the pathways to get people, that's its visibility for walking and biking as well. What we're asking today is just the formal commitment from the city to, I'm sorry, not only to implement it, to construct it, to maintain it, manage it, and to finance it. Now, the financing right now, the estimated cost is $6,860,000. That would be reimbursed at 100% once it is completed.
And that would be the award value in whole?
In whole. Anything over what we estimated, if it goes over the $6 million that we're estimating, then that would be the city's responsibility.
Okay, gentlemen, questions?
Just, just by way of clarification, this application was, these grants were issued to UTPB and to...
Midland.
Midland, two years ago, we filed ours, but it's filed incorrectly, so it was rejected. So we're already two years behind the curve. And we'll point out to everybody, because this is an MPO project, which is the board I sit on, that the piece going down East Ridge, or Stony Ridge to Fodry, is through an encore easement. I mean, it's through an encore easement.
I'm going the wrong way.
That's how it gets through there. I just want everybody to understand that. So anyway.
I got click happy, I got click happy, I'm sorry. I'm messing it up.
Watching her laugh.
I just wanted to clarify that ideally, the width of the road's supposed to be 12 feet wide, but in some areas, we cannot go to that. So that's why you're seating the 10. And then the other thing that I would like to add is, we're utilizing encore's easements.
Right.
And that's why this is the route that was selected. And one of the challenges that we've had compared to UTPB and to Midland is that we're actually the connection between them, and we're going through the neighborhoods. They didn't. I mean, UTPB has a campus, and Midland, it's undeveloped land. So we had the biggest challenge. And a lot of events that we've had to secure, we're in the process of trying to secure.
Now, the original easement, the original route was south of that. I think Joe could probably help me there. Aaron, what we looked at today, the original layout, we saw Tuesday, or Monday, was originally was south of this, going through this neighborhood.
Yes, sir.
And they've changed that.
Yes, sir, the original route kind of went south.
Down by Bankhead, down by Bankhead.
Toward Bankhead, and that part of, I guess, that southern part of Mission Drive.
Right.
Yes, sir.
So it was moved up here. So this is the latest, greatest drawing. But we're just two years behind it because of, we couldn't get our paperwork done. So anyway, that's the history of it. Just get it done. We'll get a grant to get it done, but it's, so we're behind, we're behind the curve.
Yeah, we are a little behind.
All right, do you have any other questions or discussion? Not entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Stoker, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Thompson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda Item Number 16. Consider entering into a contract with NewGen Strategies for waste, for a water rate, excuse me, study to calculate and establish a price for all city customers. Alex?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Utilities Department is here to ask for your consideration and approval to enter into a contract with NewGen Strategies for a rate study to evaluate wholesale treated water prices for ECUAD, Greater Gardendale, and water and wastewater rates for the city. The city has not completed a study to evaluate our billing rates since 2019. This study will provide a baseline for our current utility billing rates and establish projections moving forward. The city is also forecasting that in the upcoming fiscal year, that we will be supplying treated water to Greater Gardendale. With this addition, the city will now be providing treated water to ECUAD and Greater Gardendale. This study will provide the city with accurate rates for the sale of treated water to both entities. The cost for these services from NewGen Strategies is not to exceed $80,000. We have this allocated within our budget.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
And this may not be in your area, but thinking about billing, does this look at our existing customers and look at our existing accounts and make sure they're all on the same, or on the right rate? That they're, you know, for example, my meter was not reporting correctly, so I'd been underpaying for years. Like, is it gonna figure those things out?
So this will provide us new rates for our citizens, too, or propose new rates that we will provide to council, and you could approve or not approve when we get the study back and we do the budget. So we will have to...
Be in time for the budget, though?
Yeah, will this make it in time for budget? We will push for it. I'm not sure that it's necessarily gonna get there. This at first was because Gardendale and ECUAD now are, we're trying to get that in for budget time. So we're gonna really push to have that in by then, but I'm not sure.
So it looks at all class of customers, commercial, industrial, residential, and make sure that we're adequately charging those customers the right rate per their usage, given your costs and your revenue. So, yeah, it will look at all those rates. Also, whether it makes it to budget or not, just first look at that. On the water side, I'm recommending no water rate increase at this point, given what I know.
Counsel, any other questions?
Don't remember that.
All right, Jim, not entertain a motion.
So moved.
I won't be.
Motion by Councilman Thompson, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second by Councilman Haney, excuse me.
Canal.
Canal. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Agenda Item Number 17. Consider professional service agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates to provide bid and design services for the reconstruction of East 52nd Street through, from Grandview Avenue to JBS Parkway. Joe?
Yes, sir, thank you. What I'm bringing to you is we're trying to kick off a couple of our large construction projects for this year. We've been working with Kim Lee Horn and have negotiated a proposal and a fee structure to redesign 52nd Street from Grandview to Parkway. We've, as I've mentioned to you in the past, we've evaluated multiple streets in the city. This is one that rose to the top and became a priority. We would like to award contract to them to do our design for a fee of $593,900.
Joe, do we have past experience with the work of these people?
Yes, sir. They did the university project for us, and we've been happy with them.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions?
So as part of that, looking at traffic management and making sure it flows properly and quickly and...
They will. As part of the university design, as you know, we added islands to handle some of the traffic and calming efforts there. So I'm not anticipating that on this because it's not a widening project, but we'll look at that.
Because I think this'd be a great...
Mr. Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I move that we accept this proposal.
Councilman Vasquez makes motion, is there a second?
Second.
Taken by Councilman Thompson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda Item Number 18. Consider the approval of professional service contract from Park Hill to provide bid and design services for reconstruction of East 23rd Street, reconstruction from US 385 Andrews Highway to North Dixie Boulevard. Joe?
Again, this is another street that we identified as being high need. The payments deteriorated. I look back at the history, this street went in in the 40s and 50s, and it's had nothing but seal coats and a little bit of maintenance since. We drove the street, worked with Park Hill on this one. I actually expanded the design concept. We're gonna, I wasn't asking them for a design from 385 to Dixie. I've got money in the budget to build about half of that, so I'll be coming back to you probably next year to build the second half. But it needs done, and I can save a little money by doing the design all at once and then phase construction. So what they've proposed is a fee of $298,152 for that design.
Thanks, Joe.
Joe, what will you do insofar as deciding which half goes first?
I'm gonna start on Andrews Highway's end, is what I'm thinking, and go as far as I can. And they'll help me identify that scope with figuring out how far I can get with the funds I've got.
Thank you, sir.
Counsel, any other questions?
Is this looking at any of the drainage? I know the 23rd is kind of a big...
There is some drainage.
Drainage way, yeah.
Yeah, it does. And one thing we do as part of the design is look at all the curb. Because we do have curbs that don't drain properly. We have intersections that don't drain properly in this corridor, and that will all be corrected. We'll add concrete plumes across the intersections where they don't exist. Because I try to keep any drainage on concrete. Doesn't work on asphalt, we come back and seal coat it, and now it doesn't drain. But with concrete, we don't have that problem.
Counsel, any other questions? Not entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Canal, second.
Second.
Councilman Stoker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Let's go to Agenda Item Number 19.
It's tough, I'm waiting on some good news.
All right, Agenda Item 19. Consider appointing Council Representative to the Hotel Fund Committee. Norma?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. This committee, the HOPE Funds Committee, is an internal committee made up of representative staff from the Finance Department, a representative from the City Manager's Office, and it also has a council representative. What they do is they vet all the hotel motel tax applications and make a recommendation to the City Council. Last year, Councilmember Thompson served on that committee, and a council rep is needed to serve on this committee.
Gentlemen, who's gonna draw the black bean?
Crickets.
I've served my term.
I was gonna say. Chris has got his hand up.
I'll do it, man.
So we make it a motion.
So moved.
Councilman Canell made a motion to assign Councilman Haney to the position. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Vasquez. All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
I was gonna hope someone seconded, I was gonna say me.
Motion's unanimous. There you go, Chris. All right, agenda item number twenty, discuss to consider all city of adjustment commissions and board members, including appointment, reappointment, removing, or modification, including the following. Understand, the Colorado River Municipal District, we have both Gary Haner and Dr. Jimmy Goats both up. Is there a motion?
I'd move to extend their terms. Both of them have been on there a long time and Gary's is here tonight. Thank you, Gary. He's been a very valuable asset and been on there a while and he's a big help, so, thank you. Goats, I don't know about. Sorry you have to serve with goats, but that's, that's your problem.
Motion by Councilman Thompson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Stoker, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Historic Preservation Commission, any motion?
Well, both of these, their term date has been long expired, right?
Yes, that is correct. The position must be historian or according to the ordinance.
Norma helped me out. I thought we did not, we not do away with that committee?
No, we've talked about it because they haven't met in.
Forever.
Forever since in the nineties, but council has not made a motion to actually.
Well, I make a motion tonight that we remove this from, from our roles.
I'd second that.
There's a motion by Councilman Haney, a second by Councilman Thompson to remove.
The board.
Historical Preservation Committee.
Real quick, we may, this may be a mandatory board?
Oh, is it?
Liz, you want to address it?
So we really have to change, correct me if I'm wrong, the.
Change the charter.
Bylaws, and we actually have one case that is going to be meeting soon, which is that the boys, I think it's the Boy Scouts. So.
I withdraw the motion.
Who's Thompson to withdraw the second?
And I've withdrawn the second. I did it, so.
I'm not sure we can do that exactly.
Counsel, is that okay?
That's good.
All right, do we, is there anyone that's filed to application, Norma? I'm looking at my list that you sent, but I don't see anyone.
Uh, I believe, if I remember correctly.
Looking at it.
Celeste Potter, she's, would be served as a citizen and could possibly fill the vacancy position.
I was gonna appoint her to the Parks and Recreation Board.
Let's think about it next time.
Yeah, let's table that.
They haven't met since nineteen ninety.
There are no motion. Lot of next time. How's it authority?
Yeah. What about the two that are there?
Apparently the mayor makes those, so I'd like to recommend Jeff Myers, Phil George, and Eddie Spivey. I don't think I can make the motion, Spivey has to make it for me.
Okay, so.
Move to approve.
So, Mr. Mayor, so you have three positions that will expire the.
Make, already expired.
Oh, have already expired.
Many expired, yes.
And so you are renaming Eddie Spivey on it, you said? And who are you replacing for Marissa Sierra?
Jeff Myers.
And for, and for Wayne Russell?
Phil George.
Thank you, sir.
And I'll move to approve. To approve, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Vasquez, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. All right, Parks and Recreation Board, District Two, any rec, any motion? Term expired back in November of twenty-four.
What did I have in there, Norma?
You had Tim Hernandez, and he does not wish to serve.
Did, what, did I have another card in there though, from somebody?
Uh, there is several application.
Uh, let me look at this one. Parks and Recreation.
Ryan McGuire.
Susan Gentry.
Susan Gentry, Christopher Ostrow.
Yeah, I think I put Nancy Wells on something last week.
Yes, but it was a different board.
Wonder if she'd do this one too?
I thought she went on two last time.
She did.
Oh, she did?
Yeah.
It was the zoning board and I believe the board survey.
Yeah, I know she went on.
I know she went on at least one.
I know she went on two.
Yes, it was those two boards. Uh, she is interested in serving on the parks as well.
Really?
If you wish to.
Maybe she's looking for something.
So is, well, it's not mine.
Well, that's okay. I mean, I.
I can say Ryan McGuire is on there. He's got kids, is very involved in, you know, several things around the city. And I'd just like to start seeing us get young people, young people involved to, you know, I love, I love Nancy. She's.
Now we're getting down to the real person.
But, you know, it's time to.
I, I, I would accept your recommendation.
Okay.
Because I don't, I think, don't get her overloaded.
Yeah.
So, no, I'd accept that.
Okay.
So who are you recommending, Mr. Thompson?
Ryan McGuire.
Ryan McGuire.
Okay.
And I would like to recommend Celeste Potter.
For Celeste Potter, for Rick Metzger?
For Rick, yeah.
I make the motion, we accept both these nominations?
Second motion by Councilman Vasquez, second by Councilman Mitchell, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Zoning Board of Adjustment, I'd like to appoint John Herrich.
John's on there. Oh, I'm sorry. He's on PZ.
Yeah, he's on left because he, he applied for it.
Oh, he's on ZBA? Okay. Thought that was Romero.
That was done in the last meeting, Mayor.
Who was John? Was put on playing in zoning?
ZBA, Zoning Board of Adjustment.
It says mayor, Cal, it says mayor.
Well, yeah.
You were gone.
I was the mayor.
Well, take it off then. All right.
But yeah, we still have this spot because Romero Salinas had put in the application. For Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Okay, but I thought you, but whose spot is that? Is that my spot?
The Zoning Board of Adjustment, Mayor, it's your spot.
Okay, then I'll do Romero Salinas. He seems like he's interested.
Yeah, and he was here earlier and had to leave the meeting, ran long, so.
Okay, well, I think entertaining motion for Romero Salinas.
So moved. Or give it to Mr. Stoker.
Motion by.
I'll second it.
Councilman Stoker, second by Councilman Vasquez, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, gentlemen, moving to agenda item number twenty-one. Executive Session is authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one point oh-seven-four A, subsection one, to deliberate about personnel matters. The City Council may adjourn to Executive Session two. deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of public officer or employee. A, Presiding Judge Robert Martin, B, City Attorney Dan Jones, C, City Secretary Norma Aguilar. All right, we need a motion and vote to go to Executive Session.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Vasquez, or second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Haney, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're now at Executive Session at seven thirty-eight P.M.
All right, I needed a motion to come back into session.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Thompson, their second.
Second.
Real quick, I think, so that we have one on favor say aye.
Aye.
We're now back in open session at 8:41 PM. No action was taken in executive session. Let's go to item, agenda item 22, consider the salary of presiding municipal court judge for remainder of an expired term.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we raise the salary of presiding judge Robert Martin to $145,000 for the remainder of his unexpired term.
All right, Councilman Vasquez made a motion, their second. Thinking about Councilman Thompson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Councilman Stoker, their second.
Second.
Thinking about Councilman Vasquez, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn, gentlemen.
Thank you.